We're going to work on the microphones, but in the meantime, we'll talk loud. We want to thank you all for coming out this evening. We have a lot of things on the agenda, so we're going to get moving. But I do appreciate your time and your thoughts and your interactions with us tonight. And I do want to say happy birthday to Councilor Hires.
Thank you.
Yay! (applause)
Is there a point of personal preference?
If we could start with the roll call. And Tess, we appreciate your filling in.
Thank you. Councilor Hires?
Present.
Councilor Combs?
Here.
Councilor Long?
Here.
Councilor Rattler?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you would please stand, we have Mitch Cornell from Grace Baptist Church.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. If you'll join me in a word of prayer with my friends and family and neighbors, I would appreciate it. Father, we stand before you tonight, and we're looking together toward the future of this community for 2020. And Lord, we just ask that you guide us through whatever situations that we face this coming year. We ask, Lord, that you direct our path, that everything that we do as a council and as a mayor reflects your glory upon the citizens of Talakwa. Father, we're all in this together. And, Lord, we just need you desperately in our community and in our leaders. And we ask, Lord, that you just give them wisdom and show them the way to take us, Lord. Father, give us the ability to follow them. And we put our trust in you, oh God. We put our faith in you because you have put your faith in us. And we just praise your name, and we ask for your blessing upon the city of Talakwa and upon these leaders, upon your policemen and your firemen, Father, upon all the city workers, just watch over them this year as they go out and serve this community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you would, join me in the chants here.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll begin with public comments tonight. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not on the agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes speaking time, and the total of all comments from the public will not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talakwa residents. And in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussions permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to address the group? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session. Councilors, does anyone have an item they'd like to remove?
Would you like to remove item D, please?
All right. Item D. Any others? And do we have a motion for the free removal?
I'll make the motion to a free.
Second.
Motion is second. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Thank you. Announcements, presentations, and reports. Recognition years of service for ordinary employees. Brian Skim, 15 years with the police department. That was the only one on the list. A report from the library.
Hi, I'm Robert Rooney from the library. And I know I told you all last month about the Children's Noonday Eve program. You may have seen about it in the paper, but it did go very well. There were 50 people there, and that was a great last event for 2019 course. And since we're talking about 2019, I wanted to let you know some numbers about the library, related to the library that way. We had 121,785 visitors to the library during this last year.
Wow.
There are 26,165 active cardholders. And interestingly enough, the largest age group for library cardholders is actually 28 years old. 121,591 items to check out, all sorts of things. The library, if you didn't know, there are six full-time and six part-time people there. That includes our literacy coordinator and our part-time security guard. 5,893 people attended an event or a program there. And we have 50 organizations that use our meeting rooms. There are also 2,611 people who live or follow us on social media, so hopefully you all can be one of those too. Besides regular programs, I want to go on ahead and tell you about some things that are happening, you know, as we go into 2020. Besides our regular programs that we have, we have a couple of different computer programming things that are going to be happening at the end of the month for those in grades four through six and then seventh through 12th. And those will be the last part of the month, that last week, they each have a program that way. We're also going to have a program for adults that last month that I thought might be of interest to some. It will be an adult class about internet and phone safety. And it'll be on Wednesday to 29th at 2:00. Those are just some of the things happening. You all have any questions?
Can I get a copy of those stacks?
Sure, I'm pretty interested.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Next item is a report from the Chamber of Commerce. However, I was notified that most of the chamber folks are ill this evening, so they will not be here. And that holds for the Tour Talakwa Group as well. That was a mainstream.
I have not caught it from them yet, so it's only a matter of time.
My phone.
Yes. I know, I'm sorry. There you go.
Do you have an extra, Janine?
I do.
Okay. She needs to have the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped you. Okay, there we go. I did give you a sheet on the back that tells you all of our 2020 board members as well as all of our meetings that take place. So we do welcome you at any of those meetings. We would love to have you. Okay, so just kind of a quick update. We are wrapping up our holiday season, so we're getting ready to take down all of those marvelous decorations that we did over the holiday. We had some great partnering throughout the city with Lake Region, Century 21, Hill Construction, Wilkinson's Christmas Tree Farm. A lot of people came together. We, I think I've got it down in here somewhere, over 140 volunteer hours getting those lights up, along with the City of Talakwa Parks and Rec Department helped. So we appreciate everyone coming together and getting that taken care of. We're already planning for next year's design. We were able to purchase some new things this year as far as all of the buildings, all of the lights that went on the buildings. So we're budgeting for next year, and we'll have some new additions as well. Let's see. Ladies Night Out was a great, well-attended event. It always is, so this year was no different. One thing that we did introduce this year was the Cookie Stroll on Main. That seemed to be well-received from the public. People absolutely loved it. We had a lot of families come out, a lot of children had a great time. So that is something that we look forward to bringing back next year. Wine's of Winter is coming up, that is February 4th. This is something that we do every year. This year it will be February 4th, which is about a week earlier than we normally do it, but we're Valentine's Day and all of that. And then Red Fern Festival. So we do have a meeting with some city officials tomorrow to discuss, you know, where we want to go on the city side and things like that. But we are well into planning Red Fern. We have all of our vendor registration up and going. One nice thing, I think our food vendor registration's been up for about a week and a half, and we're already halfway full for our food vendor registration. So that's all I have really. Red Fern Festival, always last weekend in April, so this year it's April 24th and 25th. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Any reports from the city department?
Just a real quick one, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on our hearing report. I sent each one of you a copy of it, I hope you got it. We ended up with 847 runs this year. Your copy reflects 840, but there were seven more since then, before January 1. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a heads up or a little bit of notice on this, one of the reasons those numbers are so high is because we are growing, and more and more people are spreading out, and every year consistently for about the last six years, that number's went up and up and up. This year, this number would have been about 75 or 100 more had we not had a wet year. We didn't have the grass fires that we normally have. And thankfully, and we're not having to deal with what Australia is in a few years back up on, had to deal with that. So those numbers are down just a little bit as far as our grass runs, so normally we don't have as much of a wet. Also, on these runs that we go on, and I wanted to kind of clear up too, this is, one run is one run, whether we have five vehicles there, 20 firefighters, or we have two vehicles there, one vehicle and two firefighters. So we count those as one run per call, and these aren't inspections, and these aren't public information or public service or public education. This is just emergency calls only, so just to clarify that. If you have any questions, all right?
Your department's been busy.
Yes, we have. Thank you, my friend.
Any other departments? Hearing none, then we'll move on to item number five, discussion possible action on items removed from the consent agenda, which was item D. To approve extra duty service agreement for services related to finance director duties done by Michelle Collins effective September 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020 at $500 per month.
We talked a little bit about some of the other changes that you've made to the managerial department that relates to our finances. And so I think the most part of the response was just wait until we get our audit report back and until we made those changes. And so I think I'd do best, so I'd make a motion to table this item until mid-month meeting, once we should get our audit report back by then, is that correct?
You're speaking about the special review? Yes, it should be at the mid-month meeting.
I'm going to make a motion to table this item until then.
Have a motion, is there a second?
One second.
Okay. I would point out that while we have had our previous finance director, the one before Dana, on contract, she has had a health issue and has not been available. And so Michelle has been stepping in and covering a lot more than what we had anticipated going into this.
Is that from Marson?
Yes. Any further discussion?
She's doing the work. We need to give her the pay. I mean, she's doing a heck of a job. She'd really want to go beyond. I think we could always go back later and re-invent it for some reason we felt we needed to, but I don't think we should punish an employee for doing exemplary work for us. I just, I mean, I just think that's a bad idea. It's a bad precedent set.
Right. I think it's more of a bad precedent to offer a raise on one end of the organization and eliminate jobs on the other side. And so I feel like, you know, at this time, let's wait and see where the numbers are at when we get the, you know, get the audit report back and go from there.
This is not exactly a raise, and it is intended to be praised, so that it is clear that it's not a raise. This is a temporary increase to get us to the end of this fiscal year.
Trey, her job description was to assist the finance director. You no longer have a finance director. She can't assist, but she has to do the work.
You know, I understand that. I think Michelle's doing a fantastic job, and it has nothing to do with Michelle or her skill set. You know, I just feel like, you know, some of the, you know... I was saying this. If we had some additional, if we had some additional assistance in that area, you know, of some that's already on payroll, I feel like it would have been beneficial up to this point.
I'm not exactly sure what you meant. Would you mind clarifying?
I think I'll stay in with my motion.
Any further discussion? If not, do we have a roll call?
Councilor Long?
No. Sorry.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
All right. Item number six, presentation from Talakwa Area Chamber of Commerce. It's June 30, 2019 annual audit, and again, the chamber is not here to represent.
Did we have the audit copies?
We do not have those.
They're in the right now.
They were bringing these in?
Yes. Okay. So you need us to table the presentation? Okay, I will make a motion to table this.
If we table it, it comes back mid-month automatically? Because if we just took no action, we could come back in the middle of the month or mid-month, wherever their schedule would allow, unless we want to lock them in.
I mean, they don't necessarily have to either the presentation, we just have to have the document. I mean, the CPA is right here to easily explain that to us, I'm sure. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's true. If they can't come, then just take action next time. It's kind of a...
Well, and technically, legally, it's not supposed to be the chamber staff, it's supposed to be the audit preparer, correct? The auditing entity's got to make the presentation.
Typically, it would involve their CPA, yes.
Mr. St. Pierre.
Okay. So Mr. St. Pierre, who I think really should be according to his schedule to visit, that's correct?
Yes.
And he's State of County, correct?
Yes. Was that a motion to table?
My motion to table, yeah, because I think...
Did we have a setup? Okay. But we have roll call.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion possible action to establish Safe Oklahoma 2020 grant award of $15,000 and approve the grant budget of $15,000. This is Chief Nate King, and I believe he is out ill this evening as well. Is there someone else here to represent? Not seeing anybody here on this one?
This is a repeat. This is a repeat of what we've done in the past, correct, Grant?
It looks as though that's the one we had in 2020.
Yeah. I mean, I'm pretty sure I remember Nate doing this before, it's pretty simplistic with all the information in the packet.
You, councilor, if you want a motion or if you want to discuss it?
I was comfortable with the information Nate included in the packet, and he's applied to this before.
I don't mind moving forward if you do.
Is there a time crunch on that? There's not a deadline?
There typically is a deadline of some sort, but I don't know what it is without it.
I mean, Steve, it isn't just something we repeatedly done. I'm from memory, I'm...
I mean, I think so. I think it's... Nate puts a lot of these before us.
Nate what?
Puts a lot of these before us.
Yeah.
But I think that there's, I mean, it's pretty standard, and it reads pretty straightforward. On page 23, I mean, it's blank for what it's used for, which is overtime fines, private violent crimes, which I'm fairly sure he's come before us for that before.
And it is funded at 100%, so there is no match.
I'm comfortable making such to approve it without Nate's presence based on our historic precedent with this grant.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Not roll call?
Councilor Combs?
You.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Item number eight, discussion possible action to lift the moratorium to allow advertising and/or recruiting for a patrolman in the police department.
Ms. Page? Good evening, councilors. As you know, you guys voted in the moratorium some time ago, Nate has a position open. It is actually a patrolman position, has been open since August. Position was vacated on August 28th. That position had, which was well before the moratorium, but nonetheless, that position had 241 hours or basically six weeks of unused leave, which clearly have expired. And so Nate would like to recruit for that position. And I support that decision, and he's cleared all the hurdles that have been there. Actually, he's had a part-time patrolman that'll probably go in, but we will recruit outside on the city website and such.
Oh, my God. I feel like we should wait until Nate's here. Got a few questions for him in that regard. So I'd like to make a motion.
I would be glad to answer any questions. I spoke with Nate today. He is ill, he's got the flu, and we've been talking about this for a couple of weeks, trying to be able to recruit for the position.
Yeah, I talked to Nate as well today.
Okay.
And I think he said there's a dispatch, a dispatch...
There is a dispatch position, but that is also a position that we are trying to fill internally, according to the moratorium, with a physician, somebody that we already have working for the city. So instead of eliminating a position, we would actually move them in, but there's a few details that need to be worked out on that. And through the course of this conversation, there's, I've had conversations with the mayor, with the city administrator, and with Nate. And so the name and the position of that employee, it's kind of went both ways because there could potentially be a secretary position open. There will be a secretary position open at the police department as well, so there was some confusion on the position, and that's why it did not get on the agenda. But I would hope that that would not be anything that would prevent this position from being approved to hire. The dispatch position again, according to the moratorium, would be to utilize people that we already have employed for the city to fill open positions, and that's our intent.
And just because we, if we opted to lift the moratorium tonight, that doesn't mean we're hiring anybody?
No, no. This is, this gives us to recruit, because that moratorium said to even recruit for a position. So there's not any hiring taking place, it's to be able to advertise. We can't even advertise for any position unless the moratorium is lifted, so...
I think I'm with Trey. I'd like to hear from Nate, especially with the two, I mean, especially if we're going from one position to two in the police department. We put the moratorium on, what, four months ago? Three months ago, four months ago?
Well, and the moratorium...
I haven't really seen anything from a personnel ask aspect that kind of shows that we're in any different financial situation. And so I think we'd stop, I'd rather have Nate here than be able to ask him a couple of questions and kind of line out exactly how he would like to move over with the personnel.
So you are wanting to not move forward with hiring a patrol officer pending the information about a dispatcher? Just clarifying.
I'd like to just...
And he has two dispatch positions open, you know, so...
Because there is nothing that would keep us from lifting the moratorium to fill a dispatch position in T-1 as well. So I'm still a little confused as to why we would not want to lift the moratorium for a patrol officer.
Well, are we going to hire the position? Are we just advertising for it?
This is only the first step, is to advertise.
Because there's no reason to advertise for it if we're not going to hire for it. Four months ago, we put this in place because we saw that the financials were as such that we needed to have this hiring freeze. And I don't think, maybe you have, or one of you have, but we haven't been presented with any financials that say anything different. So my philosophy would be we stay where we're at, and we keep the hiring freeze until we have something different that comes out of that.
All right. Further discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to table. One second.
Now the motion is second. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Combs?
You.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will explain to you.
I will.
Thank you. Discussion on possible action to rescind the step grade pay metrics for regular full-time employees, grades T-111 through T-123. Ms. Page?
Yes. As included in your packets on page 25 through 27, I currently have job titles and pay grades that we have in place now. And as we prepare for our new budget year, as we prepare going forward, the plan is, there is a perceived notion that there's always going to be this step, councilors. As you know, over the last two years, we have not followed this at all. So my, you know, my recommendation is just to eliminate this. We don't have any hiring going on. We do have a police officer that we do hire, they go under the contract, under their union contracts, so they're outside of this anyway. And then either at mid-month or the next meeting, I'm still meeting, we have department heads, our city administrator, to come up with a recommendation going forward, but for now, just to go ahead and eliminate that. Do you have any questions?
Just want to hear Alan's season good.
As she said, it wasn't followed for the last two years, so it's really irrelevant and is confusing. This would clarify it in...
Our concern is that employees believe that they, if they have a good evaluation, they will automatically get an increase. And what we would prefer to see, since we are only using this matrix for new hires, and place them on that to go ahead and create a schedule for new hires, and they'll have this suggested increase out there.
I think, I'm a little confused, because I don't, when you say that we haven't been following it, I don't know that that's necessarily the truth. I think this was put in place for the new hires. And I think any government institution, municipality, Cherokee Nation, NSU, the state, they have a grade and step system that functions exactly how our grade and step functions. You come on at a certain, your job is rated a certain grade, and you come on at that graded step. From there, you don't really use this system. You don't use the steps to get raises or promotions. That would be then up to the council or the governing body, or whoever says, you know, we're, this year we're going to give a 3%. Next year we might give a 2%, the year after a certain zero. You know, T-111 also has a grade and step system in place. This year they did, it was either a quarter or 50 cents, I'm looking at Damon, a quarter or 50 cents per hour, which didn't go on to the grade and step. And so it's not that we're not following it, it's that by using that for the raises, it's not being used correctly. And I don't really know why the employee would think that they get an automatic step. Like, where is that line of thought coming from, you know?
Well, I can tell you from my personal experience when I interviewed with...
I don't know who was there.
...her former city administrator. This was discussed in great detail, that this was something that was in place. Also, I began working for the city in August of 2018. Also, I began working for the city in August of two thousand and eighteen. And one of the first things that I heard as HR director was, we didn't get our full step increase. And we had employees that actually, you know, filed some grievances because they did not get that full step, that they only got a three percent increase. And that's what was our pre by the city council, you know, the recommendation, I think, going into the budget was the step increase. But that's not what happened. It was, ended up being a three percent per budget and then as she, I think, mirrored the same.
I don't think it's ever, as long as I've been here, it's always been three percent. It's never been a step, but.
Well, I know that this was adopted back in two thousand and seventeen. And prior to that, there were other forms and fashions of steps and grades. And this is not, you know, totally eliminating it. I think there's some good values there. There's some good data there as far as starting points. That's great. There's other things in the grades, you know, and again, I will go into the weeds on that. But, you know, I mean, I look at positions listed here, some of those positions, because I've met with all the department heads. And, you know, they have a hard time hiring a driver that has a CDL, you know, starting out at thirteen thirty an hour. It's impossible. And we have open positions in our solid waste department today that I lose. We recruit, we go through everything and we lose. So there's some tweaking that needs to be done on those grades. But at this point, we just really felt it was a good point. We had the moratorium in place. This was just the first step to kind of clean those things up. And also looking forward to our next budget year.
So if we had a position or two positions that maybe are rating too low on this, why would we not just change those positions, look at doing something else and changing those positions, not throwing the entire payment matrix out the window?
Well, the intent is to not throw it completely out the window. The intent is to continue to using the grades that we have for the positions and some of those positions would change. But in preparing for the meeting-
I think the most important is throwing it out the window. It's rescinding the grade and step.
What we currently have in place. There would be literally nothing in place, but we're not hiring anybody anyway, so.
So can I make a suggestion, perhaps that we table this until mid-month? And that we can do like one tall spoon where we rescind the existing and you show us what you want to replace that with? That way we can kind of see what, where that is going, so we will understand like where the car is going.
Yes.
And then I think that would be helpful to us to understand why. Because like you said, there's not a huge sense of urgency since we are basically at a hiring freeze, so another two-week delay.
Oh, no, not at all.
And that way-
I was really probably trying to simplify it a little bit instead of going back and forth and such because of the initial recommendation, so, but that's, absolutely.
So I think that would probably, Steve and Trey, would that make you feel more comfortable understanding what?
Well, I wasn't really, you know, this thing looks like the matrix when I see this timesheet. But, you know, to me, my only question would be is if you're bringing in, you know, not just say a driver, like you said, for example, that comes in at thirteen dollars and thirty cents an hour. And so if the matrix goes away and you've got Joe Blow who drives for us that makes thirteen dollars and thirty cents an hour. And we bring in a new guy, the matrix goes away, and we bring somebody in, this guy's been here for two or three years, now he's at fifteen dollars an hour, and we open the position up and offer somebody seventeen to come drive for us.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the way, the way I look at this is it seems to me that it would be in place to kind of have some sort of consistency throughout the positions. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't mean here or there for it. It's just whether or not that scenario seems like it could, and on the flip, and it could go the other way too. Is, you know, it could be, you know, we're only going to pay this position nine dollars an hour.
Well, and actually, you know, I've already done a lot of that work and again, we just kind of made a decision to kind of simplify things and not bring the back and forth. But in looking at the grades and looking at those positions, evaluating the people that are currently in those positions. And then if we did, like, say we moved this position to a T-112, police secretary position. Because a police secretary also does some jailer duties. If there's female inmates that come in during the day and there's not a female dispatcher, then the lady that sits at the front desk of the police department has to go in and pat and inspect. And so it kind of crosses that line. If you look at a dispatch position, it's a T-112. So, you know, there's an example of a position that we would move up. But with the current salaries we have, we only have one person. She's been here for a few years. So it's not going to create any kind of raise for that person. They're still within a range and a well above, you know, above the starting range for that position. And so looking at that, no, that is something, so I don't see that as an obstacle. You know, just, I'll use as an example with our driver for the solid waste department. You know, we had a class A CDL with endorsements. And, you know, he came to work for us. He worked for Davis Oil and was a very good driver, very, you know, had the qualifications that we need, but we couldn't keep him because they came knocking on the door and offering him more money. And people do that, but that's a hard position. Thank goodness we don't have the oil gas business here to compete with. You would never get a driver. The CDL.
I think that's hard for a municipality.
It is. It is a challenge.
And so, but potentially, but potentially the only time that this pay matrix, you know, is relevant is when we go to make a hire, right? I mean, our first, next hire, that may be two weeks, a month, two months, three months, six months, you know, so, okay.
And then it also gets you locked within a pay range.
And that's really what it would index. You would have your classifications. You would have a range.
And so you can't-
Currently what we have, there's no fear of anybody ranging out by no means whatsoever, so that's not an issue. And with a little bit of adjusting a few positions, so I'm getting with every department head on this, you know, that was our intent.
But that's only now. That's because we changed the salaries, or because we changed the compensation.
I understand. And there were some department heads that, you know, there was part of this whole thing from two thousand and seventeen that still hasn't happened yet. But I don't think, you know, now's the time to say, oh yeah, by the way, I don't, I don't recommend that given the current situation that the city's in. Oh, by the way, let's, you know, bump up these few classifications, you know, four more percent. I don't see that. And that was the intent, so certainly a council long has made that recommendation. And we've been talking about this for a couple of months. And so the recommendation was, let's keep it simple for tonight and we're not hiring anybody. The only hire we had was that police officer, which has been tabled, but would be under the contract, so. I'm very tense. Maybe at the next meeting with, you know, some recommendations going forward.
So we have a motion to table? Did we have a second?
Did we actually have a motion?
I thought you did, sorry.
I think I just kind of said that. I'll officially make a motion to table.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? Not a roll call?
Councilor Combs? Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
No.
Councilor Ratliff?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, we'll table it. Thank you. Item number ten, discussion possible action related to trash service rate study and ordinance number thirteen zero one twenty-two, amending chapter five sanitation department and garbage disposal. Mr. Armstrong?
Yes, I have put together from the surrounding cities, the pay rate of what we're doing right now. We're paying twelve fifty for residential, sixteen fifty for business per foot. And as you can see in the graph provided, that we're well under surrounding cities, smaller, same size and bigger than ours in population. And all these surrounding cities are using Polycart system, which is a ninety-six gallon can for the residents to use. So based off that, I believe that if we're going to move forward with this, we need to offer the community more. And this will be part of the beautification process for talent quality. It would maintain litter better than the bins that some residents have to help. They'll contain it later, keep trash out of the creek, so keep our, our part of the rain country beautiful. There are things that will happen to happen with these ordinances. Do you just want me to read through some of them or how do I, I don't know how you want me to approach the ordinance for this person.
Councilors, you were given a graph copy of the ordinance. There are a couple of items that are highlighted that still would have to be resolved. So it's not ready at all for consideration for passage. But you've seen the ordinance and you've seen what was passed out, so if you've got questions.
Well, is this, that was passed out the same as what's in here that Chris has?
Well, we used Chris's slideshow to create what is in the ordinance.
Well, and another thing before you guys look at it, we have to look into some of the things about protecting our employees with rotator cuff surgeries, injuries, safety and within the road. With these cans, we can reduce workman comp cases and the risk of one of our guys getting hit in the streets. That's less trips to occur with a seven bag limit or potentially going to one side of the road one time for each house instead of three or four times depending on what's in those bags.
I think maybe we have some people in attendance who may have some comments they'd like to make as well. If anyone in attendance wants to weigh in?
Well, I will. I definitely say, I, my name's Nancy Dyson.
Go along up Nancy.
And I just want to make a brief comment that I sure do, my name's Nancy Dyson. And I want to say that I sure do appreciate the sanitation department. I think that they are one of our hardest working areas that we've got in our entire city. And I just want to congratulate you on the job that you're doing. And I think that these suggestions that you're making to change, I appreciate it.
Dr. Jones?
This question was discussed eight or ten years ago. And I second what she says. I think the sanitation workers, for the work done, are the most underpaid employees in the city. I'm very pleased with the service we have now. Now, I get in at the measure must and the size and the mechanical devices such as the ninety-six gallon residential container. I keep our containers in our garage. Now, the car probably would be tight to get by that at the door. But ninety-six gallon container, what does ninety-six gallons of fluids want to?
Well, we shouldn't take any fluids at all. It should just be household common trash.
Well, I'll fill it up with mess.
Chris, can you give us an idea of what size container ninety-six gallon is?
There is a container at the other end of this building.
Can we go get it, Chris?
I know, I know, I came from a community that has, because I know about it.
Well, and like, it doesn't have to be in the garage. It could be at the side of your house or somewhere that you can do.
If we could, we have a speaker at the podium.
I'm waiting for that ninety gallon container. But it may be overfilling the capacity. That's the first thing I see. I, Wednesday morning, I see my street with the residential trash up and down it. I know that at times an animal will pair a bag if it's put out early. I've seen that and all the other arguments. Now, you say that we can dump into this humongous container, residential trash, without having a plastic bag, a liner, a can. Now, if the neighbor up the street dumps his leftover pancakes in this container, first they want it to be cleaned, but after three or four weeks of dumping unbagged trash in this, what's that interior of this container going to look like? Who's going to come out and wash it out and why they do? They're going to wash it because they're right down the neighbor's curb with the residential waste out of these large containers. They'll go somewhere.
Has there ever been another city that uses this size container?
All the surrounding cities, Musquegon, Tulsa, all these places use the ninety-six. Because it prevents us from Athens to more than one house, so there's one per house, but they could have this one straight.
I'd comment too, from being in other cities that use that size, if your garage or something's too small, you have your own individual container and throw it in there. So that's kind of almost like a dumpster for your residents.
And I'm a little bit down the driveway.
Well.
And I'm going to have to pull a bag up my driveway.
Like, right now, it's just the conversation started because we are having like different things off of people that can't get down the driveway. Like my guys will go and get it and then take it back. So, to answer your question, like, we're just talking about it and moving forward a little bit. But if that was the case and you needed that and you called me and gave your address, we can assist you. Now, can we assist everybody, go and help?
A little lady?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't fill a thirty gallon bag every two weeks because I recycle so much. And if we go to that, I quit recycling. I'm not going to fool with recycling.
Well, you're-
And they're both willing to blame you.
Well, but this also opens up the conversation for potential curbside recycling as well because this gets us into the hot air system. I don't know. Can you make a special mention of that?
I would ask that we come to the podium to speak.
Average population with a size, when you're, doesn't it mean we have to have it, does it? Is it managed for everyone to use that size?
Well, what would have to do is that have the same system with this bar here because that's the way we're going to have to tip the cans.
Chris?
It would demand it for where we have this size.
Would it be possible to have a small unit that people could opt into if they wanted to?
Yes, we can look into that direction. I think this is just something for us to bring to you guys and to council to discuss and attend to before.
But we're discussing.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. But the answer to Steve's question, we could-
I would feel like that possibly, you know, a little bit more climate study. And one is that we have this mandatory, is to see them increase the garbage fee, the weekly rate.
Well, the monthly rate will increase.
It will increase?
Yes, because like the last time we had a garbage increase was March two thousand and twelve.
Okay. Definitely, we don't have an A3 here to build to this. That's all I'm going to say.
Something positive, I think.
Oh, I don't know. Part of it's going to be the city regulations for it being moved from the curb, because there are very few alleys in this town, from the curb back up into the garage or back up to the house. They're going to sit at the curb week, day, after day, after day.
Within these ordinance, like potential ordinance changes, it would have to be removed by the next election morning.
And who's going to enforce it?
Well, as the-
Who's going to enforce it?
I can make you do it. He's not here. We'll teach him to miss a minute.
As the, as Ms. Sue and Mr. Allen, we were out talking and we're going to send myself and my foreman to the code enforcement office to help enforce this.
Well, I live on Greenwood Drive and this morning from my house west, five, residential houses, there was four. Now, this is casually picked up this week. There was four already sitting out in the street waiting on Wednesday pickup. And this is what you're going to run into. There's ladies out there and I've got it enforced.
Tom, you had something to say?
I'm, I'm curious why if you make thirty pounds of trash a week now, why will it weigh more if your trash can is bigger? Are you going to make more trash if you have a bigger trash can?
Who would get all my recycle stuff in and help recycle?
I don't care. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tom.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
How far from the street will your employees, too, I assume, come to pick up this? Will they come to my back door?
No, it'd have to be outside of your house because we can't, we can't legally go into your property and go by your house.
And outside of the house?
We can do that. It's just like the concept we came up for the older, the elderly citizens, we would be able to help with that. So as long as, like, as long as we can't lose visibility of the employees past your brother's house, so if he was on the side of the house, it would work.
Some houses have good white concrete, some of them don't have any concrete, I believe. Don't that, if your boys get this down, will come from their truck to the side of the house as long as it is visible from the truck.
For, for the elderly citizens, just for people.
We'll give them the fine.
There's some freezing in the ordinance itself that we can share with you.
I heard not before.
Well, Joel and Rogers, I was just wondering how would we handle the yard trash that we have now, like all the sweet gum balls I break up every week? Will they go in the trash bin?
No, it'd be just as, as we regularly do on Fridays, just call them in.
That's all, that's all I want to know.
Hey, Chris, I didn't dig, I didn't dig into the ordinance, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Peter Stevens and I don't know if anyone else, maybe he has dog problems in their neighborhood, but I live on a real little short street. I think everybody has their share of dogs and sometimes they're out and, and that can really cause a lot of harm. That's my problem is the dogs carrying up their garden stuff. Another problem that I think we need to face.
Thank you.
And Chris, like the, like, is there an ordinance against, like what she was talking about, like a fenced area where you, you know, seems like you got two trashcans and you got four pallets around the, I mean, can we make, is all that going to go away?
We could make it that way. Whenever Mrs. Sue came along and did it right on, we, we walked upon a couple of those makeshift trash containers. And people want to do the right thing with their trash ninety percent of the time, but, you know, people throw inside these bins where the wind kicks it up, blows it away, all this other stuff, but with these cans, they wouldn't need that. They wouldn't have to have a enclosure by their mailbox or anything like that. They do.
And so with that, with this code enforcement designation that you're going to get and if that piece is included in the code, will you be able to leave kind of a, a note to them or have, you know, offer them some sort of pickup like with Mrs. Rogers' gum balls where you guys can haul that, you know, the four pallets or the chicken wire or whatever that's sitting on the corner currently where those, you know, where those wastebaskets go?
Yeah.
We have a way to get rid of those?
Right now, we have, the street department has a gravel machine, so we would ask for cooperation with them to help us remove those all at one time. Because what will happen is, well, we will have to spend an hour trying to break that down, pick up all the loose trash and then that gravel, we just grab it and put it in the bag and move forward.
I want to talk about those trash bins that you're talking about. We have those at people's houses because there are so many feral cats and dogs that run loose in this city. And we call and call and text and text and take pictures of them. And it goes on for a year and sometimes it will take a year to get a dog picked up and taken out to the pound. And I believe that the ordinance says that there are not to be feral dogs and cats running loose. And so that is part of the problem right there is if the ordinances would be enforced regarding dogs and cats, I believe that's under Mr. Johnson's purview. If those ordinances would be enforced with tickets, maybe progressive cost of tickets, we might get some of the trash stopped and then that would help all around because we're all in this together.
Thank you.
Well, and if I could just say one thing because I just want to share really with the people here. I mean, you guys know me, but I came from a community that I was born and raised and we had a poly card for twenty-some years. And so just like this, I, I do kind of rule right now. So I pay significantly more than what you guys could be paying for a smaller poly card. But nonetheless, we never had any issues with dogs, people, you know, you haul it out to the curb on Friday, my trash day is on Friday. You know, you may come home at lunch and the trash is already been dumped, but most people are already pulled or poured up. You know, it's a community the same size as Calipol, actually one of our comparable cities. And, you know, and there's, there's things to work out, but what's nice is that, that trash, that was a big thing to the community. I thought it was crazy that there would be bags of trash on the people's drop ways. And I go through like Little Town Viennetta and they have poly cards. You know, I was like, lucky it's that. And so I know Chris has been working on this project and that's why I thought I'd have to go get it because they really are, they're not real hard. If you don't have that much trash in it, you don't have that much trash in them. Sometimes we forget our trash and guess what? It sits in my driveway for the week, you know, and I try to get it all up in for the next week. It happens, but if you don't, you don't want to put it out, you don't, every week if you don't have that, it's here, it's contained.
You will get more because I'll quickly resolve.
Yeah. Well, that's a challenge for every community, but I just wanted to share that with you guys. I do have that. Chris, I'll kind of get this tomorrow.
I just had a quick question. Is there currently a regulation that for trash that current has to be in a container? So I see, I might see just a lot of, you know, the plastic bags out there and they put them out the night before and by morning the dogs have scattered and all over the neighborhood.
Current ordinance does not require a container. It requires if you have a container, that the lids be on it, but it does not require a container.
I think that needs changing.
I agree.
I would just like to say thank you to Chris. I mean, I think since I've been on council for five years, this is the third time that you have brought this up and you have relentless, you've been very persistent in getting this done and I think it speaks volumes to you and the way that you're working in sanitation. So, it's amazing to me when I moved here, I'm not a lifelong Telequallian. I've only lived here for nineteen years. In the first eighteen years, I lived in Fort Gibson and I can't, the first eighteen years of my life, I lived in Fort Gibson and I don't remember a time when that little town just to our, like east, west, west, south, didn't have this type of system. And it made for, it's easy and convenient and, you know, it made for even a little bit more pickup. If you see, you know, if you pull your car to the, to the edge of your driveway and you see something in the, in the ditch, it's easy to pick it up and throw it in. Whereas now, you've got to put it in a bag and do all of that. So, thank you for your hard work in giving this to us and I think it's going to be a big benefit to the residents and council.
One question. Question that occurred to me is, what do you do when there's no flat area adjacent to the curb? Because these got to be set at a certain position on the curb for the truck to be able to access them. And if you've got, you know, a steep bank along there, there's no place to set a cart anywhere, the driveway's sloping, so you can't set it on the driveway. What are you doing in those kind of instances? That, you know, those are mine, maybe it's citywide, but for individuals, there are real problems. And also wanted to mention a little, Hominy, Oklahoma, you know, just over a year ago switched over to the Parkston and it worked real well there too, so.
Thank you.
Hey, Chris, I have a question. Aren't there like drive-in pools in the bottom, so like you can ask them whether they'll open it if it's ringing?
That would be upon purchase of the container, top of these vendors. I just got the, the price and the ball on for this so deal, but Warwick said that if we, for like buying, they can put it in there for us so it doesn't take away from the entirety of the recycled material that these kids are made from.
Yes. This was for discussion only tonight, so if there are no further questions, thank you very much. Item number eleven, public hearing for comments regarding the 2020 application for funding from the recreational trails program administered by the Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department for the Calipol Mission Park Project Construction Phase One. It's got my name associated with it, Sheldon?
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. We are working with the Telequall, can you hear me, Brian?
Just switching about.
Is that fair? Just a question. The, been working with the Telequall Mission Park Project Group on a potential application for funding from the Tourism Recreation Department. That funding is a maximum of $240,000 grant fund, which is eighty percent of project cost, with a twenty percent match. That match can be in the form of in-kind labor, donated or volunteer labor and equipment, cash matching, or any combination there are. Did a similar project like this in Stillwell several years ago. It is an eight foot wide trail, just over 1.1 miles, including driveway crossings. We have ADA compliant parking, which would be a, a part of this, this potential project. The really good thing, I learned something new in talking to Susan Henry at Tourism. And if you've seen the project site, there's some of it that is relatively flat to gently sloping. There's some other hilly areas that, that are conducive to more challenged trails. So, once we meet our ADA requirements on what we're calling Phase One construction, even though it's Phase Two of the park group's efforts, we call it Phase One Construction so that we can get back in line for planning on subsequent phases. We're not bound to do that, but, but it is a, it shows the intent for us to broaden our trails systems. We, once we meet the requirements for ADA compliance, which will be solid surface parking, dedicated handicap parking, and a trail with a grade of no more than five percent slope, then we have met our ADA requirement for the rest of the park, even though it may not in itself meet ADA requirements. And what that means is on subsequent funding, if we do a challenged trail or there's been a discussion about a punk trail for bikes and that kind of thing, we don't have to worry about the challenges of more than five percent grade. So, we were encouraged very much by Tourism to apply. They said they're seeing five to seven projects funded a year. They're doing more projects with less amount of funding so that they can spread that funding around. But knowing the scope and the breadth of this project, I feel comfortable in applying for the full two forty. We had in Phase One, as you may recall, was the purchase of the property. For those, for the benefit of those who may not know, the appraisal has been completed that meet the standards for purchase with federal funds. That appraisal has to be reviewed by a qualified reviewer. That is supposed to be done by this Friday, the 10th, and delivered to the city. We'll send that package up to the city and actually get approval for that and then move to close on the purchase of that property. Though that may not occur by the deadline of this grant, which is January 31st, it will be complete by the time that the Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Board meets in March and therefore we can apply for this second phase or construction Phase One. But nonetheless, that seems to be moving forward. And with that, I will open it up for comments and I'll take a few notes and be glad to share those so that they're reflected in the minutes. I met with Dr. Clifford and this board more, and I butchered your name, I apologize. And we discussed Phase One of the trail and kind of some elements that they want to incorporate and gladly let them speak to this project. I've basically caught up on this for about the last forty-five days, but trying to immerse myself in it so we can speak intelligently in our application should we be sure. Any comments?
As, as Mrs. McGlado indicated, we did meet and after meeting with the mayor and discussing options for, for future grant applications and pretty much what exactly you said is, is my understanding of the, the progress that we've made to this point with the hope that the appraisal, that it's going to be green lighted, even though it's a yellow book appraisal, green lighted through the, the process and meet the state standards so that we can close on the property purchase and then move on to a second phase application.
And just for the community and I guess for you all, we've managed to raise $40,000 is what we have kind of in hand and in cash, right, with assets. And then we are working with ICTC, crossing our fingers that the Big Machine Operating Program will take this on as a project and walking the property with Ed Fight for kind of a flood survey runoff idea so that really I guess ICTC would dig the retention ponds and then of course we'll get bids for, what we really think is going to happen is Phase Two of the grant, but Phase One of construction would be the one mile ADA compliant trail and then hopefully all the other in-kind donations and partnerships would get us the retention pond. And that would be really it. And then working with Telequall Trails to set a date to start building the single track trails in the back, so.
And that, as I see several agenda items, I assume it's kind of a stepwise process as we go through and, or are we, are these things to be voted on tonight by the council?
This is for discussion. This is just public comments.
Okay. And we did pass around a sign up sheet for anybody who could sign and wanted to sign because as part of the grant application to kind of have an idea of who participated in the, in the public hearing associated with the application.
Dr. Clifford, I don't think that may around the horseshoe. Let me make sure we get our speaking through.
Mrs. McGlado's got that list. And we did not get city employees to make the terms. I don't know if we should have, could have, whatever, but we did, so the president's not bad.
Any questions from the community that just here?
Where's the location?
First and Mission, right on the corner, 21 acres that takes up about probably two city blocks and goes back behind, that's the Native American housing.
Leon Daniel Heights.
Okay, that moves on to item number 12, which is discussion possible action to authorize the contract rent rider Sheldon McGlado to apply for funding for the Recreation Trails Program administered by Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department, up to $240,000 for the Calipol Mission Park Project Construction Phase One.
As the contract states, you specifically have to authorize me to act, which will incur, you know, a fee for the service. Again, I feel quite strongly based on my past experience with tourism that we'll be successful, if not in the hole in entirety. With the $40,000 match that they're offering and the in-kind labor that we're talking about and volunteer labor, I think we'll blow our $20,000 out of the water, which is going to score highly on an application. So like, even though they're wanting to fund smaller projects. So like, even though they're wanting to fund smaller projects, uh, smaller dollar projects and have more of them, I feel quite confident because they've invested in this part of the project in the past that we have a high rate of success.
I think this is an exciting project and I was happy for it a year ago. So I'm happy to continue the progress moving forward. So I would gladly make that option to approve.
Have a motion second, further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 13, discussion possible action to commit matching funds in kind labor and equipment, donated cash, donated labor and equipment up to $60,000 for the Telequash Mission Park Project Construction Phase One.
I don't believe you'll be on the hook for the entire 60. Uh, what I'd like to do is, um, visit with your street commissioner to see if there is, uh, the availability of, um, any use of manpower or equipment. Uh, we use a FEMA cost guide, um, to quantify, um, donated, uh, or in-kind uses of equipment. Uh, labor is at the stated rate plus bringing benefits. Um, and you can make a lot of hay with, with, um, with using in-kind, um, with the commitment from the Parks, um, Group, um, with anything from ICTC's, any construction or anything that will carry over from the Phase One to this construction. Um, I'm fairly certain that the city will not have any type of cash match. Um, and I would say at the most it would be $20,000. Um, but I think that's going to be on the high side of this one. Um, future phases may require more, but I would like to speak with the street commissioner in order to, um, see if, if he has the manpower and ability to do that.
Mayor, you want to speak with the commission, the street commissioner before we take a vote on this?
Um, no, the application is due January 31st, so it's something that we need to go at a break big pace. And I think you called me Brian and I'll let one slide. Um, but, um, if you would not delay, like I said, I think with the, with the Parks Group, I've asked them to provide their commitment and cash match up to 40,000 in writing on their letterhead. Um, that, uh, that plus the ICTC and Fight Study, I think is going to get us there. Um, I'll prepare a commitment letter for the mayor to put on her letterhead just as an insert. If we don't end up using it, you know, it may not even be necessary with the budget that we're dealing with.
Okay, I was just questioning whether or not you were wanting us to hold off on, on motion before.
I'd rather go ahead and I apologize.
As Mr. McGlado indicated, the Talapaw Mission Park Project and any contributors of that match money that, uh, are willing or going to put in a commitment letter and do the statement and bank records as necessary to, to verify anything, uh, as well. One thing before I forget is we will have a public meeting. It'll be in the Science Building at NSU, uh, Jan- January 21st, uh, at six o'clock. So we'll have a, uh, invite people to participate in the project and have input to the design and such at this point as much as we can, at least to get feedback from the community. So that'll be, that's, we're going to advertise it in the paper. Uh, it'll, uh, all the details will be there. Um, and what else was opposed to that?
I just.
Oh, yes, this, as far as the $60,000 match, and I realize there is concern, but, you know, since there is the, the money that's already been committed for the purchase of the property, correct, that's a grant funded pool of money, okay? So after reimbursement, 80% of the full cost of the purchase of the property will be back on the city's coffers. So there should be plenty of designated money available for a $60,000 match. However, with the $41,000 that Talapaw Mission Park Project plus in-kind contributions, I agree with Mr. McGlado that it shouldn't be anywhere near that figure at all. As that was in the initial application, uh, other than time and grant writing by the city staff, there wasn't any, uh, hasn't been any real cost to the city of Talapaw.
Dr. Clifford, are you guys going to do like a Facebook event so we can invite people to the January 21st meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have, we do have a Facebook page, yes.
Okay, why don't you follow your Facebook page, I just haven't seen a lot of posts lately.
Right. Okay, and we do need a new sign, so if anybody wants to donate a sign and help us build a park, we'll, we'll take your contribution.
Maybe my brown?
Maybe, good idea.
Do we have a motion on this?
Some do.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? If not, we have roll call.
Uh, Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Discussion and possible action to authorize the mayor and interim city administrator to execute necessary documents and provide any documentation for matching funds or in-kind labor or equipment for the Talapaw Mission Park Project Construction Phase One and Grant Application.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Not roll call?
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number 15, discussion of possible action to appoint Dr. Long Endor Dower Combs as authorized representatives for the city to attend, open and read aloud the competitive bids for the trail lighting along Water Street, funded in part by 17037 CDBG 17. Mid-opening scheduled for Friday, January 10th, 2020 at IPB, City Hall, Council Chambers, 111 South Cherokee Street, Calhoun, Oklahoma.
Um, the, um, the mayor and city administrator asked me to help achieve a release of funds for this project. Uh, that release was granted today. Um, the sooner we get the project moving, the better off we are. Um, the, uh, the bids will be for the labor portion, not necessarily the purchase of the lighting. Uh, Colt and I have been working on that and, um, we do need to have somebody designated in the minutes and that was authorized to represent the city. Um, we hope to get that project done by May 1, ideally, uh, and get that closed out so we can get back in line for future funding of Congress.
And I have a quick question for Grant. I was asked this and I forgot to ask it earlier. Um, if we, if either Dower or I do this, does that group has to be able to vote? On it, if we are at the bid?
Either or both?
Either or, it's either.
That's right. So, look at long. Do we have a motion on this?
I don't think so.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and second, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Thank you, Sheldon. Item number 16, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number 1293-2020, changing the zoning of property located at 2353 West Chalkdell Street from Open Display Commercial District C3 to light industrial district I2 for following real estate, they're following, yeah, legal description.
Thank you, Mayor, the Indian Council, Happy New Year to all you guys. Uh, this is the second reading, so it's, um, ready for action if you so choose. Um, I think the location we all are more familiar with is the old Pepsi plant left of town. We've actually read this one three times. We came back with a modified, an improved legal description from the first reading. So we read it up in mid-March and December. So, nothing's changed other than Truwell is excited about this. They've already submitted some, uh, site plans and an idea, so they're jumping again, but I guess they feel confident about action. Any questions since our last meeting about this reasoning of this?
I've driven by this like three times and I am still just amazed with the city.
It's just very, you can tell by the map that it's on the border.
I didn't know that was possible.
It's so weird.
Yeah, and it's, it's right up right next to another property. I mean, it does seem like a device. I make a motion, but.
Second.
Have a motion second, is there further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call, please? Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Council Truwell will be happy to get to work. I can already tell by the emails I'm getting.
Item number 17, discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 1294-2020, changing the zoning of property located at 3,000 South Muscogee Avenue from Open Display Commercial District C3 and Single Family Dwelling District R1 to light industrial district I2 of the following real estate, they're following a legal description.
Yeah, the legal description is better described as the old studio built for. And it's worth this, you know, that. Um, and you'd be shocked to know that most of it is R1 single family and has been since it was annexed into the city limits for whatever reason. And so, it makes sense that it doesn't continue to stay R1 single family. Um, the applicant, uh, had the, uh, Lee Seaton, the, the first reading of this and went into great lengths about the operation with, uh, lots of pictures. Um, it, it will be a medical marijuana production facility. I don't know if you have any questions that you come up with since the last meeting?
Chief, did you have some comments?
Uh, we, Fire Marshal myself, Assistant Chief, we went out twice with the, the business, uh, the person who's put in the business, and he went over in depth with what he's formed to do. Uh, he even went over to Muscogee and turned his growth facility over there. It was very professional, very impressive, very clean. Uh, they, they really stepped up. They wanted to know what they need to do to meet the requirements. They're willing to do that. Uh, and so we sit down with them on all the plans. I was very impressed with the, the facility they had in Muscogee and he is, he's from here and he assured you, he's sure that he's going to keep it as clean and as professional over here as it is there. Now I think it'd be, I can't think of another use for that area other than I want around too.
Councilors, the motion?
A second.
Further discussion? If they're none, is that roll call?
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yeah.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Item number 18, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number 1295-2020, changing the zoning of property located at 123 West Willis Road from Open Display Commercial District C3 to light industrial district I2 for the following real estate, they're following a legal description.
Yeah, again, I don't want to keep giving you Cherokee, Cherokee County directions, but this one's better known as Step Mobo on Willis Road. Uh, it's the formerly, where the former office was, the office has been bulldozed, they've spread gravel and improved otherwise blighted area. Um, the applicants here, I think at the last meeting, uh, they weren't quite sure what the potential use was going to be. I think they're closer along to making a decision and, and so I'll leave it to the applicants to decide that. Would you want to? Did you want to? He was good at it. Um, I'm not sure I can disclose, uh, exactly what the, uh, owner is pursuing on this at this time, so I better hold off on that, but I will say it is not medical marijuana. So that was kind of the, uh, thought of this going into I2. We did seem to think that it was, uh, best served as I2 for the surrounding properties. Uh, but I want to double check with him on disclosure before, uh, I roll that out of the meeting for sure, so. Okay, any other questions? Who would tell me, honey? I just wanted to address the elephant in the room because that was the question he was asking at the last meeting. You know, he didn't say, "No, it's not."
Councilors? Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Item number 19, discussion possible action to adopt ordinance number 1296-2020, changing the zoning of property located at 1107 North Cedar Avenue from Single Family Dwelling District R1 to General Commercial District C2 for the following real estate.
All right, this one isn't as easy to describe, but if you turn, no, just kidding. So, um, this is a little single family lot, there it is on the map. Uh, just north of there, um, is, I think it's Savannah Apartments maybe, or they could be on the east side and something else is on the west side. But it is an apartment complex just north, they're adjacent to it. Um, it's currently a single family home. Um, it had previously been used as an in-home daycare. And that is the intended purpose of the person, the property owner requesting the zoning change, is to do a childcare center. Um, our code only prevents that use in C2, which is general commercial. And so what, um, Planning Commission did is they chose to go with a specific use restriction and said C2, but only for a childcare center. Um, Attorney Lloyd and I have discussed this and, um, you know, we, we did some research on precedent and, uh, past practice and there wasn't a whole lot. And so he made a recommendation, um, instead of with that language in the ordinance saying C2, specific use, childcare center, um, we should go with something like R1, single family, with an additional specific use of childcare center. So it makes it a little cleaner 10 years down the line when, um, everybody's wondering, well, what, what can we do with this property?
And that recommendation is in page 79 of your packet, there's two different versions. So, I'd also add that the Planning Commission, I think, wanted to do what I presented as page 75. And I, they just didn't know how to do it at the time it was presented, so we're working on that.
Yeah, we've only dealt with a handful of specific use requirements.
So to clarify, in this manner, it would say R1, so if the property were sold at a later date and it was not a childcare, it could only be used for a residence again, rather than bringing in some other business.
That's correct. And I know at the last meeting, um, some counselors had some concerns about it, um, the size of the daycare being located in that residential area. Um, I just want to, everybody to remember this is land use only and there's a lot of other processes, rules and regulations that property owners going to have to abide by or request variances, board of adjustments, maybe even this way, um, to reach the number that they desire.
Chief, any more?
Uh, Fire Marshal Garrett has been out there, she's, he's visited with Ms. Brandon who looked at all the, the requirements that they were going to need to have this, uh, more of a sigma high tech sprinkler system in the facility because of the sheer number of kids they want to keep. Uh, the number that is listed on their license is way up there and she has no reason to want to keep that many. I recommended to her that she reduce that number if she doesn't want to keep that many because of the size of the, the structure itself. Uh, either that or they'd have to put a exit in every door, in every room in order to keep the kids. However, some of them, it's not feasible to put a, a door in or capable to put a door in. So sprinkler system is going to be implied. They are both, I talked to, uh, Ms. Garrett and Ms. Brandon, they're both willing to do that. Uh, they had every intention of meeting all the requirements and codes as far as the NFPA and the fire codes are.
Does that being a dead end street affect your sprinkler longer?
It, it does not, uh, you know, other than if somebody, you know, volunteer or fire truck takes the wrong turn, uh, and can't go through a through street. Uh, we generally have, uh, with GeoSafe, you can simply just, you know, point at your phone and it tells you how to get there quickest and easiest way. So it doesn't really have a big effect on us with being a dead end street. We have a lot of those in our city.
I know there's a dead end street, there's Patty G in Cedar, but that property also has a culvert on Cedar. But that property also has a culvert on Cedar. So what I'm planning on doing is making a circle drive coming off of Cedar and back out on Patty June to keep from having congestion there with people dropping off their children and picking them up. And I don't know, hope it's not a big problem, but I hear that the water department's fixing to redo that whole water line down Cedar. That's just from somebody that works at the water department. I don't know how long that is. It's supposed to have been done already, so I don't know what, it's going to cause me hardship or my wife hardship. Also, with that being redone, they tearing up a whole street, I'm not sure there. But we kind of stepped into this deal before we really had all the facts. I don't know if they know I'm going to have to spend fifteen thousand to get sprinkler system, put a door in, or put a door in, or a room. But I'm going to try to make the best of it. And my wife, she's dead-set on childcare. She's worked for Ten Killers, she's worked for a couple of people here in town. And we feel in-town's the best place to try to help the whole community. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Can we have your name, please, sir?
Curtis Brandon.
Curtis, thank you very much. Further questions, comments? Have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Are you approving it for R three or for commercial?
R one. It would be R one, single-family with a specific additional use for childcare.
That's not in the written here, so we can put that in a minute.
Would you clarify that it's as what the voltage seventy-one?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve it for, or changing it from R one, single-family dwelling district to R one, single-family dwelling district with additional specific use of a childcare center.
Is that okay with your second?
Yes, I will second that motion.
Any further questions, comments? Thank you for that. Yes?
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
And item number twenty, discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number twelve ninety-seven twenty-twenty, changing the zoning of property located at five oh nine and five eleven Circle Street from single-family dwelling district R one to two-family dwelling district R two for the following real estate. And again, a legal description.
So this is the map of the subject property to the west. You can, it's Jones Road, and you can kind of see the track sticking out below the legend of the high school. You can see a lot of the adjacent zoning is R two already. I think it was about ten years ago the applicant came and requested an R three zoning district and was denied for multi-family. They have two lots, two homes, five oh nine and five eleven. The applicant's proposal is to demo both the single-family dwellings and place one duplex on one lot and one duplex on the other lot.
Do we have additional comments or concerns?
Yes.
We'd remind you that we're going to need your names for the record.
Okay, I'm David Nagel and live at five three six Summit Avenue. And I believe there's also a petition that has been circulated and turned in to you, which shows the surrounding neighbors are in unity with disapproving this proposal. We see no reason why the developer could not build, replace those awful structures that are there with nice, single-family residences without having changed the zoning classification. And another thing is that the R one zoning classification provides a little buffer there for protecting the historic homes that are in the area. And if you allow commercial development right up to them, then that diminishes the desirability of those older structures and provides less incentive for their continued being maintained in good condition, so.
My name's Scott Lawrence. I live in the same area, and I'm here speaking in support of my neighbors in opposing this variance. Because I live on a street where there is multi-family and duplexes right across the street from me, one side of the street is single-family houses. Some are homeowners living there, others are rentals. And my neighbors on that side of the street have always been good, responsible neighbors, but I've had nothing but problems with the, especially the duplexes across the street. I moved there in around the year two thousand, and I would say from that year up to about two thousand twelve, there was never a time when there was not a drug house operation going on there. And it just, it seems as soon as you have absentee landlords, you just lose a lot of accountability as to what goes on there. And, you know, just my efforts to get some changes going on there and control the problems there just go on deaf ears and nothing ever changed until around two thousand twelve or so. And it's gradually gotten better. I think if I hadn't, you know, kind of stepped on a lot of toes, it would end up being like another Lee Street. And so I'm here to support my neighbors in their opposition of this zoning variance.
I'm Jane Bond in five thirty-one Summit Avenue. And this property that wants to be rezoned is, we look at this in our backyard. And our neighborhood is already, since we were here the last time, a few years ago, two more houses have come in on little postage-stamped pieces of land. And it might have been for one family, but you'll see four college students' cars there at night sometimes, or two when there should be one, or two, three when there should be one, you know, for that family's house. I think we're all here for different reasons. Some are here because of the traffic that is increased by these little pieces of land that are turned into, you know, rental property and such. So I think we don't want any more cars and people in our neighborhood. And that's why we're here.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Jane Bond.
Evening, my name is Shelley Bailey. I live at five thirty-five Summit, which is the one directly catty corner to the little red square there, which means when I look out my bedroom window, I will see a giant duplex outside my window. My house is probably the newest one on the street, and it was built in nineteen forty-eight. It is destroying the character of this neighborhood. If I wanted to live around college students, I would have bought around NSU. I wanted to live in a nice, peaceful neighborhood, so I bought up there. It's gotten so bad lately, even with just a couple of addition small houses. I have begun writing down license plate numbers for warning. People speeding up and down my road constantly. There's no speed limit sign posted, there's no children at play. And especially concerning how close to the schools we are, you would think that, and a lot of children walk home in that direction, we need something there, different meaning. But it is already becoming a major issue. We all have pets. I have four grandchildren who play out in the front yard, and I have people doing forty-five at that hill. When I discovered that they were talking about building a duplex there, I literally went into each one of my bedrooms and looked out the back window and realized I will be looking directly at it if that's what's built right there. It's just not good for our neighborhood, and it's not good for that community. And if we continue to try to put these on, as she said, postage-stamped-sized properties, this town is not going to have the character that it has always had, that has made us unique to Oklahoma, that we have so much historical preservation in this town, and we're at risk of destroying that.
And I'd like to emphasize that this is already a neighborhood with a lot of problems. We have a lot of abandoned houses. They are rental houses. And then they, you know, perpetually deferred maintenance. And when they're finally uninhabitable, they just abandon them. And there's probably half a dozen abandoned houses just right in that immediate area around Russell and Circle and Pendleton. And one of them has been abandoned since I moved there in the year, around the year two thousand. It's twenty years had abandoned house. I went down to the city office here, the zoning and ordinance enforcement. Many times, it's kind of my yearly trip down there to try and get something done about it. And it's still there. And these are buildings that are uninhabitable. They either need to be remodeled and made habitable again or torn down. So this is already a neighborhood that is just really on the tipping point. So anything that we can do to make that, you know, kind of better than worse, I think that the council can see that it's something we should support.
Thank you.
And you used your phrase, and you described it as a neighborhood at a tipping point. And I thought that was a very good phrase because it hasn't been that long ago that this body voted to turn those there into R two, which is going to allow those Airbnb unmanned mini-motels into the neighborhood up there. But now let me remind you that each one of them, they voted to exempt their own residents, their own neighborhoods, from having these unmanned mini-motels in them. But they put it out on us to put it in our neighborhoods. And so it is a neighborhood on a tipping point, and it is because of your old actions.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
I'd just like to encourage everybody, if you haven't read the statement at the top of the petition, to do so because it provides quite a bit of rationale there, describes, we've all got various reasons. And we all basically shared all of them. The different people have brought different parts of that total rationale to call attention to it. And one of the chief ones, though, is, of course, is this being across the street from the school, there are a lot of kids that walk home and walk along there. And there are no sidewalks, no curb and gutter, and yet we're talking about increasing the traffic there significantly.
Mr. Johnson, is there anyone representing the owner there who would like to speak?
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for me here. I want to thank the head here for making my point exactly. It's a lot of empty homes, get vacated, and how many, doesn't he say, is that right? Houses that are over there, are they empty?
How old? Twenty years.
And how many houses are there that are empty?
I think there's four or five just right in that one lot area.
Newer homes?
No.
That's my thought, sir.
That's what we had in bed.
Okay, so we would like to have some new homes in this area here. Kids walking from school right on my home, family homes, duplex, two bedrooms, two bedrooms. Kids walk right there, you know, the traffic. The houses are older there. I'm not sure how large they'll be, really. I heard an enormous number, I thought. I had some of the plans to say how big Newville will be, so I'm not sure how big her windows are. We'll see. I've got five lost in the area. If we improve the property, we win. If we don't, we all lose. I'd like to improve the property. I'd like this party to agree with us and improve the ordinance.
Hey, David, can you tell us a little bit about, you know, there's the grade, you know, coming off of, I think that's Circle Drive, the one that goes up the hill or.
If Russell, that's Russell.
Right. Okay. So if Russell goes up the street, so there's a rock pile, then that's, based upon the images, that's your area.
Yeah, there's no postage, there's not a postage-style stamp lot, they're big lots.
And so are we, you said there's five lots, there's five lots in that area?
We own, we own five lots.
Right, inside this area?
No, that's two lots. We own just three lots down Russell, we own, three lots down, we own one Russell. We own two on the corner on Jones. And these two here, so we own five lots, but then boom, 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 boom. Mr. Dave, are any of those that are presently have unoccupied houses, native?
And are you, you know, as far as the layout, and I think I heard you say that you don't really have a clear, defined, but are you guys going to go?
It's going to be a split-level type of duplex because of the slope.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know how far are you going to go back off of Circle Street into that hillside a little bit?
Right, we have to, right now, the existing homes, the city street plan is over those homes. The homes were there first, city came through and laid straight over the homes. So we cannot rebuild where they were. It's impossible.
Okay, and so, but are you, because I drove by there this morning after some phone calls just looking at it. It seemed like there's a lot of space up on the hillside there. Are you going to level that off and build, or is it going to be facing Circle Street similar to where those houses are now?
They'll come back to the south, up the hill some. Because of the slope is so steep, it has to be, in my vision, is a split-level building. You can't just dig a cliff out, I don't believe, to finish this, a split-level type of a single, single-level, a split-level of buildings.
Now, David, were you waiting to have the plans drawn up until you got this approved?
Absolutely. We spent a tremendous amount of money to get to this point, and frankly, it's hard to spend money and spend this. But when we do things, often with our business, maintaining, taking care of things, we don't come with a background in the way I guess it that way. Any further questions, though?
Any further questions?
I have a question. Why not develop single-family homes on those lots?
Very simply, economics. Economics.
You'll be able to get more profit out of duplexes.
We hope so, yes.
While decreasing our property value.
Yeah, it should impact.
That was a good example last year.
If we're going to speak, I need to ask you to come to the podium, please.
It appears to me that vacant homes decrease property values more than newbuild new homes do.
I can't agree.
Vacant homes in a neighborhood decrease your property a lot more than anything newbuild.
No question about that.
But I thought you said there weren't any vacant homes on your lots?
You're correct, Nancy. Our lots are all rented out. Your gentleman said there were, how many empty ones?
Vacant homes?
Yes, sir.
At least somewhere between four and six.
Change, that's okay, though.
Are there people, are there people living in the homes that you're planning on tearing down right now?
There are.
So there aren't any vacant ones alone there?
On my property, no, there are.
Question, why would you just not build these in an area that's already zoned for multi-family housing?
I own these lots.
That doesn't answer my question.
That doesn't answer my question, then I can't answer my question, sir.
We do have a petition here?
Can I make one more comment? I'm sorry. I thought this house is an investment for one, we have spent so much time trying to pay this house off and remodel and take care of it so that we would have a nest egg someday when we were ready to retire and be able to sell it. My husband has worked at NSU forever. He works. My husband has worked at NSU forever, he works over at Georgia Pacific now. I've been a teacher. We're not rich people, this is how we get by. And if my property value goes down because the people who buy it or want to buy are going to be looking out the back window at a duplex instead of the beautiful view that we have now, where does that leave me and my pocketbook and my investment for the last 13 years into that house? It's just not right.
I, there's nothing I can do about my house. I mean, those duplexes were already there when I moved in there. And I didn't realize how adversely it's going to affect my property values. And most areas of Talalqua have pretty well recovered from the recession, the 2008 recession. Not my area. And I literally cannot sell my house. I can't leave, I can't leave that neighborhood without being a severe beating just because the duplex is across the street and, you know, the, just the preponderance of rental properties in the area. That all the real estate people I've talked to about selling my house says, well, you're just not, not going to get your money out of it. So I'm hoping I can help my friends and neighbors avoid being in the same situation that I'm in. Thank you for your time.
Scott, I don't think you gave her your actual address earlier when you spoke, she needs it for the.
624 Coy Street.
Thank you, thank you, Scott.
Avenue, I guess technically is, nobody called it Coy Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm Glenda Malden, and I initially came to this meeting because my property backs up to where the Baker home was going to be built and it was going to be rezoned to commercial, and I had a real problem with that. But I don't have any say in this particular neighborhood or anything, but just in general, I think that as a property owner here in Talalqua, and we've had our home for 25 years, when you buy a house, before you buy it, you see what the zoning is and you have an expectation that that is what it's going to be.
And they let us down.
And you live there and you, you had your plans and then for the city to come in and rezone an area to totally different than what it was when you bought and when you made your plans. It's like the city is.
If you were traded.
Yeah. It's like, we made this plan, this is what our city is going to be, and then now we're going to change it after you've purchased the property and put your, your life into it. Now I understand when you're talking the outsides of town, things change, developments happen. But we're talking about the very core of our city. We're talking about established neighborhoods. We're talking about where we want stability. I know all the gated housing and all the pretty neighborhoods, they don't have to deal with this. But if you want people to live in Talalqua, in the city, in town, then you have to quit changing the rules after people buy in.
Amen.
When I bought my house 25 years ago, there was a large empty field behind it. And it was residential, it was R1, that's what it was. And then one day they brought in a lot of heavy equipment and cleared it and they built the Cedar Avenue Apartments. Back then, there was no reason that we would be notified of that before it happened. Lanny owned right there with us too. We didn't have any notice of it, it was just done before we had any voice. And so where we were going to live in a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood, now we have the Cedar Peak Apartments, or the, not Cedar, Cedar Avenue Apartments, big apartment complex. We, we were able to at least get the city to decide at that point that they made a rule that they have to build a fence between apartments and housing areas. So we didn't get a fence, but that's it. But it completely changed our house. We, it's our next door neighbor now, we have a fence between us.
You literally must look like Blackney.
Maybe, other than the dead end of John Carroll.
I live on the other side of the fence that they built, yeah.
Me too.
I live on Baker Avenue.
Okay, yeah, we're neighbors.
Working out of Lanny's house, he doesn't own anymore.
We're on the dead end there, so they're really right there. But anyway, just to note that you guys, when we bought our homes, there was a promise that this is what was going to be there, it was zoned for that. When you change that, it changes everything and it shouldn't happen. And if you want Talalqua, the city, inside the city, to thrive, you've got to quit doing it.
Hello?
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work, okay.
It's been rezoned.
Okay.
I'm Mandy Hendrix and I live at 410 Circle Street. And I just want to reiterate the number of children that walk down that street to school and back. And also NSU students. And my other concern, and I just want to throw this in here since I'm up here, but the creek that runs through there, I don't know what happened. I think an Airbnb went in and then all of a sudden, there's like this road that's not really a road. And all these trees were taken out. And I don't know if anyone from the city goes in before you do something like that, Talalqua Public Works, and looks at all the wildlife. But there's a blue heron that had to move her nest over to a different area. I see her almost every day when I walk. And things like that should be, we share the environment. And I don't know if you've ever walked down that creek where all the trees canopy that creek. But I'm hoping the city will protect that area. We should be protecting the green areas and creating more, not thinking streets, parking lots, let's paint some lines. I mean, let's think outside the box. And improvement is subjective. I'm sure if you asked Frank Lloyd Wright if a duplex was an improvement, he'd probably say no. So I don't know if there's anything else I need to say other than, you know, these people, this is their home. And my suggestion to Mr. Dick is, if he wants to improve Talalqua and he thinks a duplex improves, improves it, sell his land and go buy a lot over next to his house and try to get it rezoned.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions?
Do you want me to read them?
She wants me to read the petition. Can I get it? So the petition says to preserve the historical and natural areas of the Academy Edition. Our neighborhood is a historical, original township. The history trail begins on Circle Street and it was part of the Baptist mission grounds established in 1867. The Academy Edition is historically significant and was addressed when rezoning was denied in the past. The historical reasons are on record from the last denied request. Academy Edition was the original township of Talalqua, which was before statehood according to the national historic records. There is much foot traffic, which includes middle school and high school students walking through and from school, as well as NSU students and neighborhood walkers. Also athletes from the high school train in this area. Rezoning would set a precedent for future development and other concerns that include pedestrian safety, wildlife around the creek, wooded area, and the water quality. Increased traffic will continue to pollute town branch from oil or vehicles driving through the water. And we encourage the city to be taking into consideration the historic and green areas that are still left in the city limits and protecting and creating more of these areas. By doing so, we are encouraging people to walk and bicycle as a means of transportation, which benefits the environment and our health.
Thank you. Counsel, does anyone want to take action or you want to let this one ride?
I think the integrity of the neighborhood is important, community. I've voted that way before in the past on another issue. Because I have lived here all my life, I didn't know quite a bit of the history around here. I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Have a motion to deny, so we have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
The only thing I would say is, I think that we've heard even from residents in that area that the neighborhood is at a tipping point and that there are abandoned houses. No, Ms. Dyson, it's not, but thank you. There's, we've heard a lot of things that are happening in that neighborhood and there's abandoned houses in that neighborhood. And there has to be some level of investment that is allowed to be able to be made.
If Mr. Dick wanted to build, you know, a modest, single-family house, we wouldn't be here, exactly.
And I have tried to buy the properties that are abandoned by my house and I haven't been able to. That's what we have in the bay.
Mr. Dick, would you like to speak again?
I wish to entertain your offer. What would you offer my property?
No, I'm talking about the abandoned houses that are behind me.
Investments in this area has to be made. The raw thing is all going down. Nothing's happening. If we don't move, nobody moves, continues to go down. There is no, I'm aware, any historical neighborhood boundaries in this area to be guarded. Yes, you have a nice home there. This will not decrease like your home. You talk about quality of your neighbors. This will probably, will should improve quality of neighbors. The school's right there, kids walk home, they're right there, they might have walked down blocks.
Mr. Dick, you were speaking about, you don't really have the plans drawn up yet. But you were saying that you're envisioning it's going to need to be some sort of a split level something, which would imply to me that it's going to visually be as if it's two separate structures just sharing a part of a wall?
I haven't, I can't address that, I don't know. But I know that the slope on that hill is quite drastic. So to have a single level would be, would mean carving out the whole hill. I can't see doing that.
And there are some design features that will make a structure into a older neighborhood better than maybe some other design structures?
Absolutely, there are lots of them.
It seems like you can talk to you already.
I'm sorry?
It seems like you can talk to you already about this.
No, no, I'm trying to look for.
It seems like you are.
I, I'm trying to look for if there were some time to work on a design. There might be something that would be.
I thought you were going on, you had two people denied already.
We're having discussion? We've got a motion and a second, and this is a discussion period. So I didn't know if, in the design phase, it might be that this could actually be, so it looks like?
Yes, it will, it will probably not be a Mr. Wright design of full glass windows and things there, it'll probably not be there. It will probably be something of a brick structure that will fit above the surrounding neighborhood there that's on the.
Actually Frank Lloyd Wright built a house for $5,000. So I think you could, you could.
Yeah, he built in the 20s, okay.
The houses to the north are not necessarily brick, there are a couple of them on the corners are brick. There's a, well, I'm sorry, it'll be probably a brick structure for the rebellion parents. And nothing's going to be, you know, I can't see anything other than that.
Anything else you would like to add?
I'd just go back to, I mean, what the gentleman said. You know, he's lived here for 20 years and there's still been the blight of the neighborhood. There's not been.
It is dog town.
That investment. And now there's potential investment to be able to come to the area and we're not.
Invest?
Positioning that to happen.
When people live, when they own a property and they live there, they are invested and they will take care of that property. But when it's an absentee landlord, and, you know, I've got some neighbors, the house right next door is, is a rental house. And he's very, and he's a very good landlord and I've never had any problem with him. But when you have duplexes and it's an absentee landlord, it's just, it's a step down in accountability and they're not going to take care of that property as sane as somebody that actually lives there. We are invested in our neighborhood, like it or not, you know.
Yeah, I want you to explain to me why you're putting it as an investment.
I think Mr. Dick said that he had five houses there. Have you ever had a problem with any of the, with his houses or this house or anybody that lives within those?
Any abandoned houses?
No, Mr. Dick's properties.
I, I don't know what his properties are. I couldn't, I couldn't say that.
I want you to explain to me what you're saying about, if somebody comes in and wants to put investment when these people are, I mean, investing, they have a house there.
And they are invested.
Explain a little bit more about what you mean.
Yeah, absolutely, because I just dumped 10 grand into new HVAC systems for my house downstairs and upstairs and not to mention the new roof, not to mention replacing the plumbing on this 100-year-old house. And we've got people investing there and you're going to discount that to help somebody else make, make more money than if he just put a single-family dwelling. I brought it in, you know, 100,000 dollars. Zoning into remodeling my house and I still can't sell it and, without losing money.
And maybe if there were basketballs around you, you could.
Mr. Dick, one at a time, if anybody wants to speak, they need to come up, just to be cordial here. Appreciate it.
I mean, I'm not discrediting the homeowners in the area. But I'm saying the gentleman said that there are four to six.
And we're not. I just wanted Stephen Myers to explain what he means by, somebody's coming into the neighborhood to finally invest and we're not looking at, I want you to explain what you mean compared to this, people that have homes, so go ahead.
I'm just trying to say, I'm not anti-development, we just want responsible development.
Give them an answer and then you come up, be up for the comment, I'm sorry.
Please, no yelling from the seats.
I'm sorry. I don't think anybody here is anti-development, we're not, we're not, these people saying, you know, no more development here. We just want responsible development that's going to uplift the neighborhood, not decrease the property value.
I agree, thank you very much, sir. Exactly correct.
Yep, a duplex is not going to accomplish that, and that's my point, I think that's all we're going.
A single dwelling.
You know, please, just, you know, if you insist on building there, build some modest, single-family houses that, that will, you know, improve or at least maintain the quality of the neighborhood. That's all we're asking.
Mr. Myers, did you want to finish your comment?
I was just going to say, I'm not discrediting the investment that you, that homeowners have in the area. But we've heard, I heard from the gentleman that said there are four to six abandoned houses, abandoned lots that are in the area that have been for 20 years. That brings me pause to think there's something that is, it needs to happen in this area, there needs to be.
I agree.
I agree.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But that's not it.
Yeah, if you're just taking advantage of the situation to put up cheap, high carpet, uh, housing is not the answer.
I guess that becomes the.
Again, please, no yelling from the seats, please come forward.
I think that becomes the give and take, in your opinion versus, you know, Mr. Dick's opinion.
Yes, sir.
I hear your intention of name-calling, the arbitrary term being used, President, myself, and for the council and yourselves. I'm not letting anybody here.
Name-calling?
We have a.
I can't hear you.
I am not a absentee landlord.
You're not living there in those houses?
I live in this town.
This gentleman has the microphone and it is his turn to speak.
I live in this town, I have a great investment in this town. It is in my best interest, it's his best interest, to improve this town.
Explain, explain how it's been town's best interest.
This gentleman has the microphone, please let him speak.
I just asked him to elaborate.
You will have a chance.
So counsel?
I asked him to elaborate.
I have a genuine time, consider my, my.
Can't hear you.
My, number 20 proposal for a denial. And I think I answered the questions I could answer, I believe.
My name's Kami Phillips and I live at 522 Summit Avenue. And I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Scott Warrens.
Scott Warrens, you live on Coy?
Yes.
Which is a couple of blocks over.
About a block over, next block over from Russell.
And so they have the. And so the area that we're talking about is our area right there on our hill, where all of the old two-story homes are. And he's a little bit ways away, so his houses that he's talking about that are empty aren't actually on our hill. Now, there are a couple of houses that Ms. Anderson was talking about that she's tried to buy. I believe they belong to Doc Wilkins. There are a couple of rock houses that are empty, and so we're working on those to get rid of that problem. But this particular area was the original American Baptist mission area. It was a couple of, excuse me, I'm a tropical, of course, a couple missionaries that came over, were trail itiers. They stopped north of Westfield, and then they moved one into Talalawak, and Cherokee Nation gave them 160 acres. Those two missionaries passed away, and then, I've got my, my ears mixed up here, but Bacon College, the guy that owned, that established Bacon College actually started it through Talalawak, after those two missionaries passed away. And then Muskogee gave him some acreages, and he moved it over to Muskogee. But this area has such a history to it that any time that something gets rezoned, I don't know who rezoned all of Academy R2. That was Ellen Johnson. That was, that was why they had to exit.
I have a magical power.
I do have a question, because on this map, most of Summit Avenue looks like it's already zoned R2. And so I was wondering, for those of you who are from Summit Avenue, are you on property that is currently R2, or are...
I'm not.
We are.
We are. The house, the house next, the house to the south of me is, but all from my house, in the old baggage house, and then the other house that's going downhill, those are not. Now, it looks like possibly the old, the old hospital, which is the Bond House. I believe it may be, are they still here? Is yours R2? I have no idea. I think it's where that stops, and then the house is below that.
There's not a lot on Summit that is down towards Circle because of that sharp hill, correct?
But actually, there's one, two, three houses on my side that are still R1, and then one house, I believe, on the other side that's still R1.
Okay, so there are four properties on Summit that are still R1, we believe.
Mm-hmm. That's what I think it was. And so we want to keep, we don't want any more R2 in there. Because every time R2 comes in, it just opens it up for more development. And we need to stop that.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this is not a state-approved historic district, correct?
No, but we're working on that also. There's no area in Talalawak that is even approved, that, there's no area in Talalawak that's state-approved. There's no area in Talalawak that's even in the ordinance as an approved historic area.
Okay.
There's a process for that, though, if you guys are interested in our...
Yeah, we're, we're, we're slowly getting there.
Dogtown Historical District.
Thank you.
I want to address the abandoned, the empty houses that you've mentioned a couple of times, Stephen. And maybe you're not aware, but there is a city process for that, and it's called the Abatement Board. And so the abatement board are the ones that are allowing, if you want to use that phrase, are allowing those houses to stay vacant and boarded up. The windows are forged up. It's not, it's not, it's not these people out here that aren't doing it. It's the abatement board that I believe is under Mr. Johnson's purview.
I've been going down there for years and looking at it.
There's an abatement board.
Thank you, Mrs....
And this is all part of the picture. I mentioned that. I didn't, I don't want that to become a distraction, you know, to the abandoned housing issue. That's a separate issue, but I brought it up to show you that this is really, like I said, a neighborhood at a tipping point. And I've seen, you know, from my perspective, living right across the street, let me show you where I'm at. I assume this is Pendleton here. I'm right there, and this is what I have across the street. And originally, when I moved there, this was just woods, and so it's just these buildings, these duplexes here that were owned by David Lowery, and I think they still are. And Mr. Lowery is a very nice man, and I talked to him again and again and again. He started, finally started doing background checks on his tenants, and we got rid of most of the drug houses. But still, my house, I can't sell it. It is just, it has not recovered from the recession because it's zoned R2 right across the street, and that's, that's not gonna change. Nothing I can do about it. I'm hoping I can help my neighbors by, you know, sharing my experience. I'm hoping I can help them, you know, avoid being in the same situation where they're stuck with a house that they can't sell, and, you know, it's their life investment, you know. We're not wealthy people. This, our house is our investment. And that, you know, if it gets rezoned, that goes down the tank. And I think that's a very serious issue. I'll shut up now.
Mr. Nigl.
Our house is the last house on our side of the street before you go down Earp Hill, as the students call it. Because the coaches bring them over, run them across Jones Road there, and run them up the hill to train them for gym classes. And they've been doing that for generations. Creating more traffic endangers those students, makes it more problematic. We should be working towards moving back some of this R2 zoning to make it more restrictive to R1, if we're serious about maintaining integrity of these historic structures and improving our city. Going to multifamily dwellings there does not accomplish that. And I think any planning director who's impartial, you bring somebody in, and we'll look at that and say, what should, what should be done here, we agree with that. And we've had, well, one time the Mutzig home, which is what, three houses up from us, corner of Spring, was, I understand, was a duplex for a block. And now, fortunately, after the Mutzigs restored that house, and it's still a single-family dwelling, that helped the neighborhood. Kami Phillips has restored that home there and really helped, helped the neighborhood. We've, we've worked, people bought into that neighborhood. We've worked to make this a better place. And putting, I mean, we don't want people kicking us in the shins and saying, "We don't appreciate your efforts and your, your investment in this neighborhood here" by bringing in multifamily dwellings there. And we've got nothing at all against developing those properties. In fact, they need be. Those houses need to be torn down, and they need single-family, new single-family dwellings built there. And that's the existing zoning, and it ought to stay, and it provides an offer against more encroachment of, you know, these duplexes and multifamily dwellings.
Amen.
That's the thrust of our position, I think.
So regardless of how this vote goes tonight, I am so thrilled to hear a group of people who are passionate about their neighborhood. And we have some areas that do need some help and some revitalization. And that's one of the things that's very near and dear to my heart. So what I'd like to ask, regardless of this vote, if I could get some phone numbers, and we can schedule some time to talk about your neighborhood and about revitalization, I'd really like to do that outside of this meeting, okay? Okay, we have a motion to deny?
Yeah. Counselor Combs made the motion to deny, but Counselor Ratliff seconded.
Are we ready for our vote, if so?
Counselor Hyers?
No.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yeah.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor?
Would you please read the motion again?
So Counselor Combs made a motion to deny...
I would like for the property to be revitalized, just so. To vote?
No.
Yeah.
So the motion dies, or another motion to be made?
Oh, so that motion just killed it. Okay, so then I will...
Yeah, you guys voted against denying it.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve, Mr. Zed.
Second.
Have a motion, second.
I can't hear, I couldn't hear what she said, I don't know.
I made a motion to approve what was recommended on the denial of twenty.
Could we have a roll call on that, please?
Okay, Counselor Combs?
No.
Counselor Hyers?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
No.
Mayor?
Yes. So item number twenty-one, we didn't meet him?
Can they explain why they voted the way they did?
Just one moment. We need to finish our meeting, please.
About the holiday, you know, Tuesday?
No, it's...
But we do work seven months, and we're opening those bids for the trail item. Depending on when we get reviewing.
Are we done?
The holidays...
We are finishing up the meeting here, scheduling our next... So...
So we're gonna do the twenty-first?
Yes.
Twenty, it says.
So it's the twenty-first? Okay, so mid-motion meeting will be on the twenty-first. Is there a motion to adjourn? Vote, folks?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes. Yes.